Follow this meeting order. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. This is the Porter County Board of Commissioners meeting September 18th, 2018. We have moved right into consent agenda. This is for approval of minutes, August 14th, 2018. Approval of payroll, August 24th and September 7th, 2018. Approval of claims, August 16th, August 23rd, August 30th, September 6th, and September 13th, 2018. We have the treasurer's monthly report with the month ending April 30th, day 31st, June 30th, and July 31st, 2018. And we have the weights and measures monthly report from July 16th to August 15th. And then we're going to get right into the Memorial Opera House with contracts, and I'm going to turn that over to Commissioner Blaney.
Okay. We've got Christian Lauer, artistic services agreements. Jim Deal, Robert Clark, and Angela Hyde, all artistic services agreements. Lisa Woodrose, Julie Drave, Bobby Sukavachkov, and Don Parker, artistic services agreements. Terella Mimidis, Kyle Lidkey, Stephanie Reader, Michael Bernstein, artistic services agreements. Jen Nelson, I messed up the easy story. Andrew Flash, Brian Moore, Robert Bodney, Mary Weber, all artistic services agreements. Leslie Plazek, venue rental agreement for nonprofits. Greater Valpo Chamber of Commerce, venue rental agreement, nonprofit. Another Valpo Chamber of Commerce, nonprofit, venue rental agreement. And good for Porter County Committee, venue rental agreement.
Okay. We'll open up the floor for the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion in a second for consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post saying sign. Motion carries. Now, we're going to get into announcements. We have Dr. Alfred Kovak has retired from the Porter County Board of Health. And we have a new doctor, Dr. Derek Gasper, has been appointed in his place. And what we would like to do right now is take this opportunity to introduce our new Dr. Derek Gasper to the Porter County Board of Health. Welcome, Board of Health.
Thank you. As you had said, Dr. Kovak did submit a resignation. Our Board of Health is recommending Dr. Derek Gasper for you to replace that position on our board. Dr. Kovak served us well for many, many years, and we're hoping that Dr. Gasper will be able to do the same and bring some young blood onto our board.
He is young.
He brings our average age down by about 12 years.
Oh, nice.
No offense, we do have Donna Warner is here also. Donna helps bring our average age down also.
I like how he dug himself out of that. Pretty good.
Do you have anything you want to add?
I'm excited to essentially be on the board and represent the community. I live here in Valpo, from Michigan, trained in Chicago. My wife is from Chicago. We moved here. We love it. Want to become more part of it in civil duty.
Appreciate your interest. Motion to appoint Dr. Gasper.
Second. Motion in a second on the floor. Jim, did you have a comment?
Yes, Commissioner Good. If the Board of Commissioners could, we send a letter of appreciation to Dr. Kovak for his years of service, acknowledging his years of service.
You got it.
We will, and I'll give something to you to make an approval.
Thank you, David. So, we have a motion and a second on the floor. I'll call the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post saying sign. Welcome to Porter County Health Department.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next up on our announcements, this is sort of an interesting announcement that we want to make. This is a contribution that's going to be made on behalf of Porter County Government. And what is going on here is on September 29th, which is in a couple of weeks roughly, the United States Navy will be commissioning a new USS Indiana vessel at Port Canaveral in Florida. It has been more than 75 years since the last USS Indiana was built. This will be the third USS Indiana to be commissioned, but will be the first submarine named for our state. The Virginia-class submarine is being constructed, including parts and machinery for more than 100 Indiana manufacturers from across the state. As the next generation of tax submarine, it will provide the Navy with capabilities required to maintain the nation's undersea supremacy well into the 21st century. Virginia-class submarines have enhanced stealth, sophisticated surveillance capabilities, and special warfare enhancements that will enable them to meet the US Navy's multi-mission The USS Commissioning Committee launched an effort to engage all 92 counties, Indiana counties, in support of this new submarine by offering three challenges. The first challenge was to provide a gift for the ship. The second was to provide a gift for the new 150 members of this vessel. The gifts were to be unique to the county and had to be small, as there is limited display space and less room for crews than on any other submarine. The third challenge was to raise $1,000 to endow scholarships for the crew. We are proud to announce that we've met all three challenges. For the ship gift, what we're going to put up on here, the board, for the ship gift, I really want to thank the Porter County Tourism Department because they stepped up here and helped the county out here. What we have is we've sent two DVDs that were produced locally about our northern and southern borders, the Indiana Dunes and the Kankakee River. The first is Shifting Sands on the Path to Sustainability, which tells the story of how the region sparked a movement for a national park. The second DVD is Everglades of the North, The Story of the Grand Kankakee Valley Marsh. For the crew gift, we have sent 150 18-inch mini-bats manufactured by Valpo Razal's own Hoosier Bat Company. Hoosier Bat Company manufactures the finest wood baseball bats and ships their bats around the world. They are the third oldest wooden bat manufacturer in the United States and have three bats in the National Hall of Fame and Museum. Hoosier Bat was able to support us in personalizing the bats by engraving the USS Indiana name on each bat along with the words plank owner. Plank owner is a term used by the United States Navy dating back to the era of wooden ships. It implied that crew members were around when the ship was being built and commissioned, and therefore had bragging rights to the ownership of one of the planks in the main deck when the ship was commissioned. For the scholarship challenge, we will be forwarding checks from donors totaling $1,000 to the commissioning committee. The Commissioners want to thank Hoosier Bat Company for manufacturing the unique personalized mini-bats with relatively short notice. We also want to express our gratitude to Lorelei Weimer and the Indiana Dunes Tourism and their board for their support in providing the ship and crew gifts. It is because of their assistance that we were able to meet this challenge. We also want to thank the USS Indiana Commissioning Committee for their outreach and challenge to participate in such a historic event for all Hoosiers. We hope that our small contribution to the ship and crew will serve as a reminder that the great people of Porter County are proud that our Hoosier State has been honored by the new USS Indiana and that we will always stand in solidarity with its plank owners and future crews. We urge the citizens of Porter County to learn more about the USS Indiana by visiting www.ususindiana.org where they can also support the Commissioning Committee with donations. So, again, I want to thank everybody involved in this. It's a sense of great pride for our county to be involved in this, and it's a great day. So, I want to thank everybody for doing that. Now, on to some other business. We're going to go right into awarding bids here. And if we could have Dion from Skillman come forward and we'll get to that part right now. Morning, Dion.
Morning. Thank you, Commissioners. As you're aware, last Tuesday, September 11th, we accepted bids and opened bids for the Porter County North Annex Project Bid Package 1. And just for a brief snapshot, what Bid Package 1 basically includes is the site work, utilities, foundations, and the shell of the outbuilding, and also the additions to the existing building. We received a total of 12 bids for three bid categories, which obviously represents an average of four bids per category, which means good participation. The three bid categories, bid category one, we're making a recommendation for the General Trades, Ziokowski Construction, in the amount of $3,039,800. Bid category number two is Masonry, Ziokowski Construction, $544,900. Bid category number three, Roofing, EC Bavella, $816,400, for a total of $4,401,100. We did evaluate the bids for completeness and to make sure that they understood the scope as the documents intended. And then, just as a sidebar, Bid Package Number Two, which is the remaining portion of the building that's going to come out in late November, early December. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Just to point out, the reason we're doing Bid Package One right now, just for the record, that pretty much has all of the winter concrete work involved in that bid package, so we're trying to get that let so we can get started on all the concrete work before the weather section. So, we're trying to get ahead of it here, get our foundations and things in. Then you'll see the other bid packages that follow that will include the rest of the construction. So, we're trying to look through some weather right now, and that's the reason it's broken down into this bid package the way it is. And I also think, what were we, where are we at compared to what we estimated versus the bid package that we, the bids that we've gotten in, apples to apples? Because I know there was a floor component that we moved into this package that was in the last bid package, so if you even that all out, where are we at?
We're slightly under by around $100,000.
Okay. So, we're still trying to ride trajectory trending under budget. Okay, good. Those are my questions. Any others for the board members?
I see where some of those bids were very close. And as the public may or may not know, the Board of Commissioners, in regard to services such as this, we don't have to select the lowest bidder. We have to select by law the most responsible and responsive bidder. But this board has set, I think, set an example that we, such as this case, we are selecting the lowest bidders. And that is consistent with the way we've managed this up to this point, so that's good to see.
All right. Well, I'll make a motion to approve the three recommendations for Bid Package Number One. Ziokowski Construction for General Trades, $3,039,800. Ziokowski Construction for Masonry at $544,900. And EC Bavella Roofing, for Roofing, $816,400, for a total of $4,401,100.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post saying sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Dion.
Thank you.
We'll be seeing you soon, I'm sure. Next on the agenda is Gary Up construction. This is payment application number one for the Porter County Courthouse restoration in the amount $179,317.25. The remaining balance is $368,182.75, and that is for the work that's taking place on the courthouse and has been for the last several months. Any questions for the board?
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion in a second for Gary Up construction, payment application number one. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post saying sign. Motion carries. Next up is JW Wurz and Sons Inc. This is a change order number one in the amount of $3,300 for the courthouse renovation. I believe that was for glass?
It's window glazing.
Window glazing. And was that for?
Was that for the height? For the additional glazing on the glass for sun?
So, it's for low E, right. So, what we did was we've added, in all of our windows putting in over there, we're adding the low E gas fill that will help cut down on the heat load that comes in through the glass. We think it'll be looking at it, long-term savings in utilities and things over time, so we're going to go ahead and spend the additional $3,300. I'd also like to comment that I think in the next three to four weeks, we will start window, we will start replacing all the windows in the building too. So, over the next two to three weeks, you'll see a lot of activity, a lot of windows going out, a lot of new windows going in. So, we're going to try to get all that done before winter hits here too. So, and that's the contractor that's doing the work. So, all those in favor, do we have a motion?
Some.
Second. We have a motion in a second for change order number one to JW Wurz and Sons. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post saying sign. Motion carries. Next up, we have a social media policy and archiving contract. Kurt Ellis has spent a tremendous amount of time on this at the county level. We would like to have Kurt take us through this. Good morning, Kurt Ellis.
Good morning again.
The floor is yours.
As you know, I've spent several months on doing the research on this, looking at court opinions, looking at other model policies that other municipalities has done. And basically, I like to boil it down to just a couple of, three or four points. First of all, and I think which is beneficial, our county departments have over 50 social media accounts across eight different platforms, which means we're being very proactive in communicating with our residents. I mean, this covers everything from emergency management, Sheriff's Department, to the Opera House, the Expo Center, and probably our biggest success story is the animal shelter with nearly 27,000 followers on that page.
Wow.
So, we're doing a good job. The problem comes is that we don't have consistent policies or accountabilities regarding how we use these social media accounts. We don't have a written policy or accountability regarding account social media security, administrative access, permissible posting content, or responding to comments. This social media policy that's in front of you assures consistency across all of our social media accounts and reduces the risk of disseminating incorrect or misleading information, or, God forbid, committing one of those embarrassing gaffes that go viral. Second, we don't have a consistent policy that includes commenting guidelines for our followers that address the deletion of public comments and/or blocking of, or banning of users. This leaves us vulnerable to violating First Amendment rights and lawsuits. So, what this policy does, it includes commenting guidelines that will need to be posted on every one of our social media accounts and sets the rules for people. These guidelines are neutral and comprehensive. There was a federal case, which I quoted in the analysis that we gave you, that deleting a comment based on viewpoint is a violation of First Amendment rights. But the same ruling said that governments do have the right to moderate comments as long as there is a criteria put out there that is neutral and applied even-handedly. And that's what this includes, is that commenting guidelines. It also, in the policy, it provides a process that an administrator must go through before they delete or hide a comment. The other issue, the other big issue here is we have no capability to archive social media accounts. The Indiana Public Access Counselor says, "Social media accounts are public record." And, interestingly, even accounts, even comments that are deleted have to be archived, similar to emails. Okay? We get emails, okay? We might delete them from our own inbox, but they're stored and they're archived. So, I went through a process of looking at several different archiving services to determine what best fits our needs, which of them are unique in being able to provide, meet the unique needs of a government entity, and can, of course, archive deleted comments. As part of that, I recommended that we go with Archive Social in the contract, which the amount, I think, is just under $5,000 a year to do. The pricing is about the same among all of them, but this one was able to really do everything we wanted to do. The other thing is, if we get a Freedom of Information Act request or public records request, the ability, the way they have their setup in being able to search is so simple to use and allows us to export the media in any way that we want it done. Now, a couple of things I want to clarify. This applies to the management of social media accounts run by departments. This does not apply to how employees manage their own personal accounts. That will be addressed in the employee handbook. The other thing is, this policy, right now, will only impact those departments that are under the jurisdiction of the Commissioners. After you approve this, I'm going to work with Scott to develop a memorandum of understanding for, like, the Park Board, Solid Waste Board, Stormwater Board, that we will say, if you adopt our policy, we will include you in the archiving, and you don't have to pay the extra cost of doing that, which would be about, if they set up their own account, probably about $3,600 a year to do.
So, this is more, you're aggregating it, so it's much more cost-effective?
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct. And plus, if they adopt this policy, then we will have consistency.
Right.
Straight across the board with all county departments.
And I also think that if they do adopt their policy, then the elected official or department head would then take responsibility and?
That's, most of the accountability for following this policy is to department heads. There's a couple of trigger points in here. Most of them are notification, like, they need to notify us if they start a new social media account so we can add it to the archive service. There is one where I put that it is going to require the approval of the Commissioners or their designee, and that is to ban a user from any social media account. That's, I mean, that's like putting a sign out here saying, "You're not welcome in this building." And we have to be very, very careful about doing that, and, to be honest with you, avoid it when possible. But other than that, basically, there are some notification steps in here, but that's the one big trigger. The other one is concerning Facebook groups. And without boring you to death with the technicalities, Facebook groups are a unique little tool where you can allow some people to join and not allow others to join. And that, again, gets into, are we blocking people from county government access? So, we had to set some very specific rules regarding those. And when somebody wants to establish a Facebook group, the Commissioners need to see it first to make sure it fits the rules.
Thank you. Kurt, any questions from the board?
Thank you for doing this.
There's going to be, to be honest with you, right now, the one who's going to impact the most is me. But I will be doing some work with the departments on training them and helping them get this all set up.
Well, this is something we've talked about for the last couple of years, and it's good to see that we finally got it down to in writing, and it becomes a policy, and now we have something that we can manage going forward, and we have some consistency. And also, I think it also puts the county in a good position of liability for these type of things as well, too. So, again, Kurt, I want to applaud you. I know it was a lot of work. I know just some of the conversations we've had in the back office. Glad you're doing it.
It's something you don't really think about until there's a problem.
Well, that's it. And this is, and looking at a lot of the model policies that I used for people who had had those problems.
Yeah.
And so, those are the ones I concentrated on when I developed this policy because they've been through it.
We got out of habit.
Yeah. Thank you, Kurt.
I'll make a motion to accept the social media policy. And do I need to do a separate motion for the contract?
You can do it in one motion.
And also to approve the archiving contract with Archive Social at $4,788.
Second. We have a motion in a second for the social media policy and archiving contract. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post saying sign. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kurt. Next up, we got Rhonda Young. Or, oh, no, I'm sorry, we don't have Rhonda, sorry, head fake. Let's bring Tony Bontrager up from R. Sutton. This is regarding the county's Wellness Clinic, RFP. And I think any of you have attended our meetings. Tony is a familiar face. He's sort of guided us, please. He sort of has guided the Commissioners here in the last couple of years on our health insurance and where we're heading with our health insurance, and came up. So, good to see you, Tony.
Thank you, Commissioners, for the opportunity to come in. I'm going to go through, I've got kind of just a brief overview of clinics, just to help update everyone on some of the discussions that we've had in the past, and then, from there, we'll go through the RFP process and everything. So, if you open that up, the very first page I have in here, though, the first slide is actually a rolling 12 claims report, something that we just put together in our office. It is in a transitional page right now from your prior plan and administration and setup to your new, which started April 1st. And you can see here what this report is, just a snapshot in time. It shows from our office just kind of a leading number on where we think claims are heading in general, not a detailed look at it, but just a good snapshot. So, if you look at the report, it's comparing August of '16 through July of '17, comparing that with August of '17 through July of '18. Shows your enrollment, which is up 1%, that's the number of employees on the plan, your maximum and expected claims, which those are set at the renewal periods, your actual medical claims are down 4.6%. Your RX right now is up nine and a half, dental's up 4.3. Previously, under your current, or under your prior structure, we had a lot of different adjustments and everything, just in the way those contracts were written with your cost-plus model. Any claims over your specific deductible? You see that's been $466,000. So, when you net everything out together, you can see on a rolling 12-month basis, we've got about $7.980 in net medical RX and dental claims, and the prior was $7,916,000. When you break that on a per-employee-per-month basis, because we have increased in people, claims are flat virtually. I mean, so we've bent that curve, and the claims are coming in minus 0.2%. And if you look at the four months that we have on record now since the switch, you'll notice the first couple of months are one low, one high, just that's a transitional piece there. And then the next June and July were both very good months. So, you can see that percentage of expected, that's just a number we use compared to, say, here's what was expected. You can see we're still a little bit over kind of what was expected, but a lot of those numbers were prior to switching over. I think we've got a, we'll start to see a little more stability in your claims, so not as much monthly fluctuation up and down. So, that'll be good for our cash flow. And estimated fixed costs, you can see, those are dropping, quite a bit with the change. So, total cost overall, minus 1.2%. So, I think we're heading in the right direction.
Tony, have you pretty much worked through all the transitional stuff out of the previous insured? Are we pretty much all paid out? Is there still some contingency?
We're still getting some bills coming in. Our office might be able to say, we have it on file, and it's part of this report. So, we add in what we paid through UMR as well as what's coming in through BAS. But those will really start trailing off now, but we'll see those for the first few months. We might see a little bit more lag just from the contract structure we had previously that lent itself to a little bit more time between when bills were coming in and then when they were paid, just due to the negotiation process that those went through. So, but generally speaking, those will start trailing off, usually within three months or so, we'll start to see a pretty good trail on those.
So, is that figured into your expected number, then?
Yes.
That is, okay.
Yep. It's figured into the expected, and then also in the actual paid claims, like those medical claims in there are what were paid through UMR as well as what were paid through BAS. So, it's not an artificial, just what we, we didn't just lower only your new contract, we're taking into account both. So, overall, very happy with the report.
Any other questions on the health insurance recap before we get into the clinic thing? Okay. Okay, continue.
Yep. So now, from a, kind of step two, phase two, I believe, of maybe some of the changes with the health insurance was looking at a near-site, onsite clinic for your employees. Many employers are doing this, not just our office, but many consultants across the country are implementing onsite, near-site clinics for various reasons that I'll go through. It's all about reducing costs and better access, increasing access for your employees to healthcare. If you flip to the next page, kind of the main components, really in driving some of the savings in here, prescription drugs, so a big part of the clinic or wellness center will be helping employees switch from brand to generic drugs, when possible, obviously that's not always possible for the member, but that change from generic, from brand drugs to generic drugs has a huge price point difference for both the employee and the county. But at the clinic, it is generic drugs only, so we don't do high-end brand drugs or anything at the clinic, that's not a common practice, but generic drugs and the purchasing of those is done more direct with the manufacturers and everything, so thus reducing the cost on the prescriptions. Same idea a little bit on the labs here. We tend to see savings on the labs because it's going directly through to the lab provider, so instead of running through different channels and everything, getting markups along the way, we see those direct contracts and everything, eliminating some of that cost within there, again, for both the county and for the employees. The next piece here, not only on the financial side, but we believe also from just the patient care side in general, having a provider essentially that you're paying on an hourly basis, you're kind of hiring a provider, you know, it gets the employees out of that fee-for-service world where it is, the more times you're in, the more money, and that's not a knock on any individual provider or anything, it's just the structure that we have under the healthcare system today. So when you do this, it does allow for possibly a more time spent with the, with the member, that, you know, they're there for your employees and to spend time with them, to not just treat the head cold or something, and they're really going to try to dive in on what's going on with that member's health. So, that does mean, though, and we'll talk more about this when we get to the bids, you know, since we are essentially contracting with a provider to be there, we've got to use them. It's one of those that, if you hire them to sit there and nobody comes in, then that's not good. So we've got to drive enough participation to offset that, and once you hit that participation level is when it starts saving the money on the provider side, too. Many of our clinics that we've helped set up and kind of oversee, they're referred to more as wellness centers, so trying to get the focus even from the employees' mindset, that that's kind of, the focus of those clinics is not just to walk in whenever it's, they've got the head cold or on acute basis, but really, that's kind of a place for them to go to focus on their health overall, not just an urgent center. Urgent cares are kind of all over, they're prevalent, so there's access to those, but this is more of a, kind of an area where they can go and have their health managed well. Many of your members don't have primary care providers, they don't, can go on a regular basis to see their primary care provider for one reason or the other. Hopefully, this removes some of those barriers to give them access to be able to do that. The other thing that they do, they do allow, because you can structure them to be a little bit more tailored to your goals, is certain messaging, certain programs. We can have them educate on the transparency tools that you have within your UMR program as far as shopping for services, so they can do a lot of that as they're sitting down with members and going through things. They can help push out goals and wellness programming that otherwise, it's kind of hard message to get out to your employees, so kind of let them be that hub, that quarterback of different wellness programming and goals that we have throughout the year. Kind of from the employees' perspective, kind of the biggest thing, they tend to like is, for them, it's no-cost service. So they go in, they'll be treated, they'll be seen, they can, if warranted, receive a prescription, and if it's, if that's a prescription that's housed at the clinic, they can walk out with that prescription and not receive a charge for this at all. So, that's where it comes back to removing some of those barriers from someone with access to care. This will be provided to them at no cost. And then from the employer's perspective, long-term strategy, so there's upfront costs to pay along the way, really, until we get enough utilization, increased access to care for the employees. These are, you know, the way this will be structured should reduce some employee downtime in that if they go, they'll hopefully be able to more walk in, get their treatment and out, as opposed to possibly sitting in an urgent care or primary care office for, during that wait time, sometimes that can vary quite a bit for someone needing to take off work. And in the longer term, increasing your employees' health, wellness, and ultimately impacting your healthcare spend. And as far as that last bullet there, employee attraction, retention, and satisfaction, that's one of the biggest things we see from employers that have wellness clinics, that tends to be one of the highest-ranked, if not the highest-ranked benefit that they have is the access to no-cost primary care, some prescriptions, those types of things. It becomes a very big employee benefit for them because they're not having that out-of-pocket cost when they, when they see a provider. Next page here, so we did send out an RFP, we received responses from six various vendors for this. I think all were very solid choices, kind of some vary in their model a bit, so there's, in our perspective, kind of two models. One being an independent vendor that's not tied to any hospital system or network or anything, and the other is that the hospital networks or systems have done this with their primary care providers. Pros and cons to both of them, but as you go through here, you can see Franciscan Alliance, Healthstat, Our Health, Healthstat and Our Health are both independent vendors, St. Mary Community Healthcare, Wellness for Life, that's an independent vendor, and then Workforce Health, Wellport, which would be tied to Porter Regional. A couple of points on some of these that I wanted, definitely want to show all of them, but kind of the shortlist that we narrowed down to, got more information. Franciscan, Wellness for Life, and Workforce Health, we kind of, a little bit of each of those. Wellness for Life is a common independent vendor up in your area, there's a chunk of, there's a school trust that uses them, as well as some of the other schools in the area use them, so there's clinics already set up and going. You would have the opportunity, if you want to, if you go that direction, to tap into their locations and share those, as well as if you ended up wanting to expand and build one of your own. Probably the big thing there would be the reciprocity between those sites. So, for example, there is one in Valpo, there's one in Chesterton, those are the Mariville, Knox, so they kind of have some decent coverage around the area, the county and the area, to where members could go to those different locations, as well as if you had your own site, probably their members could come here. It would create kind of a network of those that people could go to, to get a little bit more coverage. So that was kind of on one side of it. The other side being, as we'll go through, on the Franciscan side, they already do have some sites that they have proposed to be able to tap into, again, with the same idea that you could get this kind of up and going out of the gate without a large upfront cost of doing a build-out of your own site, let you dip your toe in it, get it up and going, and then at some point in the future, if you wanted to build your own site, you could certainly do that, but you're not putting that upfront cost in building and everything else as a large upfront cost, okay? So, those were kind of the two that we had generally looking at, an independent and a hospital-based or provider-based system. Those were the two, based upon the bids and the proposals that we dove into a little bit more. So, with that, if you flip to the next page, we'll start going into the Franciscan piece because that ultimately is the one that I think that we'll be looking at. So the services to be provided, primary care services, urgent care, wellness services, disease management, lifestyle services, they have a listing of certain labs and prescriptions, and I have a more detailed listing of those as well. It's not going to be sutures, if someone walks in with stitches or an emergency, they're going to refer them to see appropriate care there. These are primary care, more primary care-type services, wellness-based, again. Children and infants under the age of two, generally not seen, those generally are referred to pediatrician to see those, just because of those differences in treating an adult versus an infant. And then also that the patient navigator, so if someone comes in and they need care outside of that for a referral or something like that, the big thing there will be, number one, using the tools that we have within the health plan to say, okay, do you have a preference on where you're going to go? This won't be an automatic that just because if Franciscan is chosen, that they'll automatically have to go see a Franciscan specialist or go to Franciscan for any services. It's not an automatic out of that. So, there will be some navigation, as well as education done for employees on their options to go where they would want. From a reporting standpoint, because we do need ongoing reporting, we'll get all of the reports that we need from them as far as visits, types of visits, labs, obviously we'll see some detail on those, but obvious, none of this data, I should have prefaced this, none of the actual patient data is shared back with the county. So you don't know who necessarily, who's going to see, who's seen in the clinic, what they're seen for, anything like that. It is all HIPAA compliant, that legally can't be shared back with the county, anyway, but I definitely want to point that out, but this is not a clinic that the county gets information back on who's going for what or anything like that. So, but we will get broad data back, say, how many people we have going, how many people have received prescriptions, those types of things. So at a broad level, we can track and make sure we know that we're getting our money's worth out of that. ROI will help substantiate that as well. So, a lot of reporting back on the health status on a broad level for your membership overall. Slide 12 here is the Franciscan Alliance financial proposal. So, they did have a bit of a unique structure to this, which is, I think, ultimately why it is enticing. So it is a flat $63 PPM, inclusive of all services, including the prescription drugs and the labs. So, many of the bids, and generally, this is a very common way, it's an admin fee and then passed through on those, but when we compared the structure of that with what they were proposing, we think that this is actually a pretty good way to go, additionally, because the way they've, their offer is, for the first six months, they're only going to be charging 60% of their fee, or charging it to, on 60% of your covered employees. And the reason for that being, as this thing gets rolled out, again, we're not going to have 100% of people walking through the door on day one or day 10 or day 30. So it's going to take time to get messaging out, people in, people used to it, that type of thing. So for the first six months, they're only charging 60% of the fee, which I'll tell you, we do a lot of clinics, that's pretty unique. That's the first time I've seen someone say, out of the gate, we're going to charge a smaller fee until we get this thing up and going. Then there's some structures even ongoing that say, look, if you get it to 60, then we're still not even going to charge 100%. So it's, we're going to pay a difference between where we're at and 100%. So it very much, the conversations were the partnership and recognizing that it's not really fair to charge 100% of the fee out of the gate or necessarily ongoing until we get the utilization through the clinic. So, again, no patient co-pay access fee at the time of visit, so from an individual's perspective, it'll be at no cost, which is the structure that we like to see. They do offer some, they, basic wellness services are covered through there, they do have some enhancements that if we want to work through, we could certainly do that. They would provide the first 15 of those at no cost, kind of as a pilot program for us to see what we like, what we don't like, anything like that, so that would be part of the rollout as well, if there's 15 people that would like to do that. They would do that at no cost for the county, just from a more in-depth wellness perspective for them, and then we could make a decision after the fact if we wanted to continue on with any of those packages or not. Slide 14, again, it is a, it's generics only that are covered through here, it's not high-end drugs or anything like that, high-end prescriptions. So what I, what we tried to do was, we looked at your top, it ended up being about your top 170 prescriptions that have run through the health plan, and we tried to match those up with the independent Wellness for Life, just to say, is there a difference between Wellness for Life as an independent or Franciscan Alliance as a provider-based? And you can see down through here, we brought it down to the disease state instead of the this script versus that script, because, as you can see here, for example, if you go to antibiotics, the second one there, you have 11 different antibiotics in your top 170 through the plan. There are six offered Wellness for Life, five through Franciscan. So they're not, they're not going to have a full stocked pharmacy there, it's not meant to be a pharmacy. They will dispense certain medications, generic medications when warranted, but it's not like walking to CVS where they cover every, everything, and that helps reduce the cost as well for them, because they're not going out and buying 11 different antibiotics to sit on the shelf. They have the five or six or so that would be included there. So, so that bottom number there, we see grand total 161, and then 66 and 61, might seem a little staggering, but keep in mind that that's counting 11 antibiotics under the plan, five or six under the, in the clinic. So it's, as far as from what's covered, a lot of these wouldn't necessarily be covered in a wellness-based clinic, they might need care outside of that. For example, like narcotics, there will be zero narcotics in the clinic, okay? So there's no, no clinic vendor we work with covers any narcotics in the clinic, those are managed outside of that, so. And then from the, the next piece here, from the sites, anyway, the two sites that will be offered, hours are Monday through Saturday, so from an access standpoint, members will have pretty good covered access there. One is in Portage, just north of Six on Willow Creek Road there, and then the other site is in Valpo, off Lincoln Way and Two there. So you can see just north of the Target Complex area there. So, from an access standpoint, I think it's really good access, which, again, will kind of drove, drove the interest with Franciscan Alliance, those two sites being already built out and covering your employees pretty well, the hours, Monday through Saturday, so really good access. Some of the other models didn't have nearly as many hours or anything like that. I will say, the way the RFP was written, it didn't request like 24 hours, because that's generally for your size, what we would see if you're kind of building your own, but under this model, what we did, we were able to expand the number of hours with that. So, pretty happy with where that came in. Again, kind of that, the unique, even unique conversation with Franciscan on them recognizing the startup costs and the initial, the initial funding piece here to reduce that down.
Yep, thanks, Tony.
Yep.
A couple of things real quick I'd like to address here, real, real quick before we, if the commissioners get into any comments or questions. I know initially, when we first came out and started requesting the RFP and looking into this, we had, there was, I think it was reported that we had, we were taking a strong look at doing something within our own building. I think once we started into the RFP, it became very clear that a lot of the hospital systems and other groups out there have already built a pretty robust network out there, and that the sticks and stones are already out there, so there really wasn't a need for the county to sort of enter in that. On top of that, it's much more cost-effective to go this way for the county, so I just wanted to sort of dispel that a little bit, because we did talk about that very early on, but as most things, when you start talking to them and you're working through them, they change, and this changed. And so I wanted to talk about that briefly. And then the other thing, and this is, this is pretty much geared towards the employees of the county. In order for this clinic to work, and one of the main reasons, there's several reasons why we're doing it, obviously, number one is convenient, convenience for all of our employees, right? That's, that's the first thing that we want for our employees. The second thing, though, is our county has had a history of very high insurance claims over the, over the past four or five years. We, as a board, have worked very hard up here over the last three and a half, four years to drive those costs down, and we've done that, and we've done a very good job of it, I might add. But we also feel there's still meat on the bone yet. We still think that there's other ways to continue to drive this cost down, and if you look at what's going on in the industry, clinics are the way that this is going. But this is where we're really going to need the employees of Porter County Government to help step up and help us with this, because I'll give you a target right now, and this is the target that this board is looking at, because if we don't reach this target, I think it's, I think we're going to have to sort of fall back and take a look at this again and look at alternative ways to continue to drive- to continue to drive this cost down. We need to get to a 60% participation rate. That is our bogey. That is our goal. If we can get to 60% participation in our wellness program, and that's probably any of these people that are on here, if we can get to that 60% number, we can continue to drive our health insurance premiums down even more. So this is another tool for convenience. You've got Saturday clinics now that you can take your kids to or to people to, so we're, you can go in Portage, you can go in Valpo. So we're opening up the gateway for convenience for our employees, but it's also, we need to get our group in a better wellness mind. And that's, that's not a bad thing to say. That's the reality of the situation, and so these are the things that we're going to put in place to be able to give them the convenience and all the things that they need, but in turn, we'll also turn around and help the county lower these premium costs. So that is why we're doing this. This just isn't to drive our costs down. This is a big convenience for all of our employees and their dependents and everybody else. And to all of you employees, this is free. This is free, okay? Free. Say it again, free to you. So free, 60% bogey, let's get there. And I think if we can all get there, we're going to create a nice situation for everybody else, and now we can take something that has sort of been a night, sort of a pokey sore at the county here for many years, we can turn around in a couple of years and really have a program that everybody can be very proud of, and that's the taxpayers as well too. So that, that, those are sort of a couple of the things that I wanted to get out there and sort of let, sort of dispel any confusion that may be out there. So any other commissioners want to weigh in or?
Just as Commissioner Good pointed out, I mean, the commissioners are trying to do our part in driving the costs down, but for it to really get to that point to where it's, it's noticeable, very noticeable, the employees are going to have to do their part. And, I mean, this is, this is a great program, it's not one that most employers offer to their employees regardless of the industry that you're talking about, whether it's government or the private sector. I think, you know, it's, it's really to, in the best interest of all the county employees to take full advantage of it.
Thank you, Jim. Laura, anything?
I just have one question on the prescriptions that are available. You can still get those, other options, right? It's just not at the clinic.
Yeah, so if, even if you walk in and the provider says you really need X prescription, it's, they're going to write the script for it and you're going to go to CVS or Walgreens and get it.
So you're still getting a free doctor visit?
Yes, yeah, it's just if they don't have that, if it's, if it's a brand-name drug or something that you need or you desire or something like that, then, then yeah, they can still get it, it's just not covered there. And to the point, not to downplay the, the need for people to go and to, and to use the clinic, but just to dispel, because this, this happens at other employers sometimes, it's not required that they go. So it's not that, I'm going to have to give up my primary care physician that I've had for 30 years to only, now I've got, it's not that, this is a, this is a great option, even alongside that primary care physician. If you can, want to continue to go there for primary care, those records can be transferred back and forth between your primary care and the clinic as well, so that, that can happen. I just didn't want to get the wrong idea that people will have to give up their current relationships and stuff too, so.
No, no, my, my family participates in a, in a, in a program that's very similar to this, and we still have our primary care physician, but it is, you know, very convenient to, you know, if you got, you feel like you're coming out with a flu, you got a cold, then you could, you can go there and you're, you're seen immediately in most cases. If they, if they cannot just dispense the drug there, they, they, you know, immediately write the prescription and you're off to the, the local pharmacy. So it's, it's a, it's a great, great program, so.
The only thing I would say to add to it is, is earlier in the presentation, it was, we talked about the laddering, the 60% they're charging us. Basically, what we were attempting to do is set up, so Franciscan, if the commissioners are to choose, you know, Franciscan as the provider for this, they have as much incentive to get the outreach and the information and the education out to the employees to understand the clinic, to utilize the clinic, because they have some skin in the game here, and that's one of the biggest differences between this and all the others, is that we're starting off at something less than 100% of our employees that we're paying for because of the acknowledgement that we need to get to a certain point.
Yeah.
So, you know, we're really attempting to put all of the horses on the track in such a way that everybody has a reason to want this to work, has the, has the motivation to make this work is from its, whether it's Franciscan and their outreach and their education program, whether it's our HR department explaining it to employees, whether it's Tony, you know, dealing with all the different providers, and as we move forward, everyone should be, have significant reason to make this work, and that's the goal of how we tried to set up the proposed agreement.
I'd also like to point out too, that as the commissioners have submitted their budgets for 2019, obviously, they have not been approved yet, and we're going to be going through budget hearings here in the next several months with the council. We have loaded the cost of this program into our budgets for 2019. So we are serious about it, and we've made all the financial requirements that we needed to and hurdles, and so we're going to put that forward on our budget presentation to the council, and hopefully, they will look upon that favorably and, you know, go from there. So I think I got, covered all the housekeeping things and all the things that we've sort of been concerned about here, up here. So where do we go next, Scott?
I think the commissioners need to make a recommendation on one of the options, and then whoever that recommendation is, we can move forward to the next meeting with the contract and have a presentation on the contract itself, and then whatever outreach and education and rollout plan they're going to have, along with Tony and RHR, and go from there.
Okay. Any comments or questions from the board? I think I'll make the recommendation for, what's that?
I think we're all thinking alike, but we're.
We're just fidgeting around here. I'll make, I'm going to make the recommendation, the motion for recommending Franciscan Alliance for a wellness provider. I believe this is a three-year contract, we, we need to talk about what were the terms, because I think that the 60%, getting back to that 60%, it's going to be tied to that contract. And if we get to the end of three years, and we're not, like, let me say it again, if we're not hunting right, and we're not at that 60% number, there's going to be some adjustments that we're going to have to make. And at that point, what it gets into is it could be, you know, maybe the, the employees have to pay a little bit more, or some of the other things that we've really tried to stay away from up here for many years. We've really done a very good job of staying away from that, but we're at the point now where wellness and the health of your group is how you're rated and how you pay for your premiums, and if we can't get there, I don't think we as commissioners up here can continue to offer these type of benefits without real engaged participation from our employees on the other way. Health insurance is a benefit, and it's a two-way street, and we all need to work together to get there. And so that's what we're doing, is we're seeing, we're going to take that next step, but we're challenging you all to do it and use the convenient way. So I think three years gives us enough time to get our arms around it, and that's our bogey, and that's what I'm, that's, that's where I'm going with this thing, at least today, so.
Well, it'll be hard to, to make sure what's offered gives you a reason to want to go there.
Yep. So.
I second your motion.
Okay, thanks, Jim. We have a motion and a second, any other discussion? So we have a motion and a second to requ, to recommend the county to move forward with Franciscan Health Alliance for our clinic choice. We would probably be on one of the next couple commissioners' meetings to where we can get the contracts together, we can have our legal look over the contracts. I know we've talked a lot about some of the legal things in many of our meetings, we've discussed what shouldn't take that long to pull it all together, but, so with that in mind, I, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, both seen sign, motion carries. Thank you, Tony.
I guess the last thing would be, Tony, assuming next commissioners' meeting, we get this, the contract approved, what's, for the employees' knowledge, what's kind of a bogey out there for the time this would start?
I think, since the site's already up and going, probably within six to eight weeks, I mean, could pull the trigger if, if we gave them today, if I said, called them today and said, go, I think November 1st would have been, would be an obvious doable date, December 1st probably at the latest if we were going today. So probably in that six to eight week time range, depending on the time of the month.
Great. And we should have the money in our budgets this year to be able to cover a couple of those months. I believe we looked at that too, didn't we?
We did.
Okay. So we're financially covered this year as well too, so. Thank you, Tony.
Thank you.
Again, the elements work, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tony.
Safe travels. Next up, we have human resources, we're still seeing in the human resources area here. We have Rhonda Young come up. Rhonda, as you all know, is our human resources director here for Porter County Government. And first on the list is the dreaded and infamous comp time report. Rhonda, take it away.
They're passing down right now. I did a shortened version of the report, which ones we have the problems with, couple of departments I've been working with to get it down. Some of them have, actually, most of them have a plan that they're ready to go. The animal shelter, Toni Bianchi, she inherited those from like 2016. So she's going to be in front of you to do a payout and go in front of the council, just to get them off the books. So none of those are hers. And I know the Parks Department, he was good until about May of this year, and he lost a bunch of employees in May, which is his heightened season. This plan is, they're going to, those two employees are going to take off Mondays and Fridays in two weeks and the holidays. So they'll be taken down. We have the county council, I talked to the president, Andy Bozick, and she's going to be taken Fridays off to get hers lowered. And Don Welson, he is already given me a schedule, and he's, his will be down. The problem with the, the comp time is the Fair Labor Standards Act, you're only allowed to have 240 hours, and as you can see, we're over that. I've spoke to the prosecutor, and the one he's taken down, she was at 35 hours, she took a week off, so she's down. And the other one, we're still working on it. His last communication with me was that he was going to do a letter, probably come in front of the commissioners, and change that secretary, request a changer to exempt, and then go in front of the council to change her to exempt if approved. He is aware that it doesn't, you know, quit the hours that he still owes her. He would have to do a payout roughly, right now with these numbers, and this report is a month behind. This is the end of August. We're looking at, if we go with this number, he's going to have to request, if it's not in his budget, maybe $13,500.
For one employee?
Yes.
So his numbers are still going up?
Yeah, she's approving about 12 hours a week on the average.
So I think, I think his plan in a nutshell is to officially change her job title to office manager, change her job description, she's already over, she's meeting the exempt amounts for her to be possibly to be exempt as she sits now.
For salary, yes.
From a salary standpoint, which would then alleviate the problem moving forward, but then have to deal with the problem that we've created meantime, which is referring to the idea of being the payout that he may be requesting from the council.
Right. He wants to make her exempt, and then she'll have to come to the commissioner, and then go to the council, and then have to ask the council for the payout.
Correct.
One of the things that we're also, you know, I think we, if, most of you probably don't come to all of our meetings, but those of you who do, this is something we've been talking about publicly for about a year now, our comp time situation. I think one of the things that we're going to really take a look at here going forward is, I think we're going to need to have actual sign-offs from all department heads and elected officials on this going forward. We're not going to accept stamps, stamped signatures. We're going to ask for real signatures. We need to figure out a way to where the people that are responsible for these departments are actually acknowledging and seeing this. And one wonders sometimes if that is actually happening or not. So if, in doubt, we just create another piece of paper, and we're going to start looking for real signatures and improving this comp time. And one of the other things that we're going to have to do, we've been battling this now for quite some time, I think it, it gives us something to do for next year to take a look at comp time and see how that is going to continue to relish here in county government. And maybe it's some other type of form, maybe it's other, something else, but we have got to get a handle on this. People just look at, people, when you look at these reports, it's just hours, but to me, I always take the times, the hours times, and it's real money. And this is unfunded, these are unfunded liabilities, is what they are. And as a county government, I don't think that we should have this high of unfunded liabilities in our payroll situation. It's just, it's not right, and just like the health insurance, we're going to tackle this in the same manner, and we're going to figure out how we're going to fix it, so.
And on the upside, though, when we first started doing these comp reports, this was a full page. So people have made some real strides towards improving it. We just have a few departments that still need to get the program.
And from, you know, the county council's point of view, I mean, I mean, offering this much comp time, especially going far beyond what the federal law states that we can, is, you know, it's somewhat deceptive in, in that, you know, when they come before the county council and the budgets are approved for a certain number of employees, certain number of part-time employees, but, you know, you're, you leave that room, you turn around and feeding hours to this extent, that's deceptive, and it shouldn't be allowed, because it, it, $13,000 is a lot of money in, in, when you look at that amount and compare it to the average salary in, of, you know, our average clerk's office personnel, that's almost, that's nearly half of a year's salary, and it shouldn't be allowed.
Well said. Well, I think we've discussed that quite a bit, I think your views were rad on that. We're going to continue to keep mining this report down and hopefully get it where it's manageable, but we have some work to do still.
Do we want to, I think we should probably do a motion in a second if we want to change the policy on the department heads or elected officials actually physically signing off on compensation time.
So moved. We have a motion and a second to create a document for department heads and elected officials to have original signature on sign-off of comp time. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, both seen sign, motion carries. I'm sorry that we have to do that, but we're, we're ramping it up. So, next on the agenda.
Open enrollment, October 15th. Toni Von Trigger, Marie Sutton, and Annie Erickson from UMR will be here on that day. It'll, that day, we're going to run it through a couple of times, but that day is going to be where Toni and Annie will be here for sure to answer questions. I think there are going to be some questions because of the changeover, and we didn't set on a time, right? I wanted to have it.
So we're going to send email blasts out to everybody and get everybody?
Waiting for Annie to get back, because I wanted to see if she would work till at least 6:00 PM our time, for the people that get off at 4:30.
Okay, thank you. Opening enrollment, October 15th.
That's a Monday.
So Monday, put it on your schedule.
And did we decide on a soft or hard way of doing it?
We haven't decided.
Okay. We need to make that announcement.
Right.
And the options being, one way is you, every employee has to come in and sign up for whatever it is, that would be a hard open enrollment, and a soft would be, if you're not making any changes, we're going to assume you're staying with what matters.
We were leaning towards a soft, but still making them sign the waiver that it We were leaning towards a soft, but still making them sign the waiver that it was offered.
So, no matter what, if the employees have said, "I don't want health insurance," we would still have them come and do that signature that they did not want it, to make sure that they understood the decision they were making.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you, Rhonda Young. Next up, Sheriff's Department, Major Gary Gier, please come forward.
Morning.
Morning, Sheriff.
Morning.
Take it away.
Uh, just for approval for the, uh, the auction, the contract.
And so, what this is, is for Instrom. They're holding the auction, and this is for surplus vehicles and miscellaneous items that the Sheriff's Department and, uh, county government always has a few things straggling that we wanna get rid of.
Yes.
This is usually held every year in the fall, and, uh, so that's what this agreement's all for. I know Scott has looked at it, so I'll open it up to the board for any questions.
How many, how many vehicles are you participating?
Um, the Sheriff's Department has 11, but, uh, total of 17 throughout the county.
So, you need to, you need to advertise that fact.
Well, we...
Generate some...
It's gonna be on our, um, website, and then, yeah, yeah, and they'll put it on Auction Zip, too, that's who the Instrom does.
Gary, can you, can you tell us, on average, what does a vehicle go for in the auction?
Uh, it varies, just based on the vehicle, but like, the Crown Vixx, on average, would probably go thirteen hundred to two grand, on average. This'll be the first year, we'll have one of our, um, all-wheel-drive Tauruses, so we're kinda curious to see what that'll bring back.
Should be more.
Yeah.
Did we get those two highway vehicles in there yet? Did we get the trucks yet? So, we're gonna put those two overly-used pickup trucks down there?
Yeah, Porter County Highway has, uh, three vehicles and a tub, what do they call it? Lowboy trailer.
Right, yeah, okay. Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second for, uh, for the Sheriff's Department to use Instrom Auctions as their auctioneer for surplus vehicles for their sheriff sale. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries. Again, that is on October 19th, 2018. If you're looking for a cheap car or something, uh, that's where you go.
Yep.
See Gary Gier.
Yeah, thanks.
Thanks, Gary. Thanks, Sheriff.
Thanks, Dave.
Next up, Porter EMS, Michael Crowley, interim director.
Good morning, commissioners, and thank you.
Currently, commissioners are a complement of heart monitors that Porter EMS utilizes for all our 911 responses, are quickly becoming obsolete. Phillips is who, is the manufacturer of our monitors, has discontinued this monitor, which in turn is causing us to not be able to get parts, batteries, um, the programming on it is becoming obsolete. What I'm requesting is, um, permission for funding to be granted for seven new monitors, for our 911 ambulances throughout the county, um, so we don't skip a beat in providing the level of care that we need to for the constituents.
Heartbeat, right?
Yes, sir. For the constituents of Porter County. With me today is, uh, Mr. Ed Fee. He is our sales representative from Physio. We are looking to purchase LifePack monitors. LifePack actually was, we, we got two bids, um, one was LifePack, one was another company, which LifePack blew out, blew them out of the water with, with the cost for the monitors, but, um, he can kinda explain some of the process that, um, because they offer a five-year financing program that we could, uh, go into if you have any questions, you know, related to that.
How many monitors are we looking at?
Seven.
And the cost per unit?
Um, roughly, it comes to thirty-two thousand, thirty-two thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Per unit?
Per unit, sir.
Kinda, kinda deal you're giving us, Ed.
As, you know, our, our company is now part of Stryker, uh, there's added levers of discounting, uh, we're offering, uh, a substantial discount, and that financing program is at zero percent, uh, which is, you know, zero percent, it's, we're basically buying, buying the rate, passing it along to, to the, uh, the council.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think when the previous Ann Brandl was in head of the EMS, I met with, we met with her, when was that? Couple months ago, um, and we went through all this, and, uh...
So, I think, based on our agreements that we have with the hospital, I think we have a fund, right, that this money sits in, and I...
We, we put together this transaction in such a way with the zero percent financing that the money that's coming back on the ambulance contract that's utilized for these things are, we'll be able to sustain the payment, um, and not drain the account in total, uh, so, using that account as we had hoped and set up originally, and this is that, what that money's supposed to be used for, um, and so the zero percent financing was the key to getting that done, and being able to thread the needle from a budgetary standpoint.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second for an agreement for new heart monitors in the amount of one-hundred sixty-three thousand, four hundred and eighty-one dollars and forty-seven cents from Physio Control. Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries. And then we had an agreement with J.P. Morgan Chase to finance the purchase of the heart monitors from Physio Control, um, and I'll open that up to the board as well.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for an agreement with J.P. Morgan Chase to finance the purchase of heart monitors for Physio Control. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Commissioner.
That's good, good to know we can get those switched out and we'll be current.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, you bet. Next up, 911, Mike Bertner.
Thank you.
Morning, Mike.
Morning.
So, you got a couple asks up in here, why don't you go ahead and give us the lowdown?
Uh, yes, sir, thank you. The first two are, uh, just annual contracts, so we have, uh, taken these down to one-year contracts, these contracts are due, and, uh, standard procedure, we'll bring these contracts to the board for approval. Uh, this is not new money, this is money that is currently budgeted for in our budget.
Any questions from the commissioners?
Motion to approve.
Both.
We have...
Yes.
Both. We're gonna do them both? Okay, so we have a motion and a second for a maintenance contract for 24/7 onsite infrastructure responsibility pair, and then we have a maintenance contract for sheriff, EMA, and EMS tac receivers, sheriff, EMA, and EMS repeaters, base station 800 megahertz radios, and mobile control stations in the amount of sixteen seventy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries. Uh, next, we have a request to pay earned other time to four 911 employees. Why don't you give us, uh, Scott and, and, uh, Mike, you guys wanna give us what that's all about?
Well, I'm coming in front of the board, uh, it's kind of a special, special request. Um, I've been meeting, uh, with the new HR Director, Rhonda. Uh, we have been part of our, uh, progression at 911, has been going through our policies, uh, looking at current policies that, um, really are outdated, and, and, but we're in a rewrite process right now, and, and, uh, like I said, meeting with the HR Director on a regular basis. And one of the policies that we currently have, uh, I sent a letter from, I think it was from 2012, our attendance and punctuality policy, um, what that policy, uh, really says is that we had incentives for employees that didn't call off sick all year, and according to the current policy, uh, these employees were to be given comp time as a reward for not calling in sick. What I'm doing is coming to the board as an alternative, um, this would not, this would be not new money, but, uh, I would just respectfully ask if I could, uh, pay these employees to follow the policy, be in compliance with the current policy, we're gonna be reevaluating it this year, uh, for future, but, uh, to just pay these employees, uh, within our, within our, uh, current budget, from our salaries budget, uh, I think the total really came out to about seventeen hundred dollars. We had four employees that qualified for this benefit, and this is from 2017, um, and it would, and the employees, we've had a discussion with them, and, and they're very good with, you know, not giving the comp time and getting the, uh, just the pay instead to, so we can comply with this.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
Makes sense to me. Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for a request to pay earned other time, uh, to four 911 employees per, per county policy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries. Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Got her done. Animal Shelter, Toni Bianchi, Director. Uh, we have a request to transfer funds in Fund Number 1000 account, thirty-six fifty vehicle repair and maintenance to account eleven-ten salaries in the amount of ten thousand dollars. Transfer funds to pay two employees for their compensatory time owed from previous years. Uh, that's the first one. And is this for just cleaning up, this is what we were talking about on the comp time report?
Yeah.
Right, Rhonda? So, we're just cleaning up things that have happened years ago?
Yes.
Uh, motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for a request to transfer funds, as noted. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries. Uh, next one, we have another request to transfer funds, um, same thing, uh, same accounts, this amount is for thirty-two hundred dollars and twelve, thirty-two twelve sixty-five, and that's to transfer to, to other employees from, uh, compensatory time owed for previous years.
Does the count is different?
Oh, yeah.
Or are there motions to approve?
Yep, it's thirty-nine fifty, excuse me.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to request transfer funds, Fund 1000, account thirty-nine fifty contractual services, to account eleven-ten salaries in the amount of thirty-two twelve sixty-five. There, I got it right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Tony.
Thank you. I just want you to be aware that we are making sure that the comp time is not being accumulated like it was before, um, they do have to approve it through me at this point.
Thank you, Tony. And I know you've been working at it since we came out with this report, um, you've been very diligent, and thank you.
Thank you.
Recycling and Waste Reduction, Therese Haller, Recycling and Waste District Fee Collection Agreement. Morning, Therese.
Good morning.
This is our annual district fee collection agreement contract, correct?
Yeah, it's an agreement between the county commissioners, as well as the auditor's office and the treasurer's office, to collect the fee that's on the tax bill and then disseminate it to the district.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the Recycling and Waste Reduction District Fee Collection Agreement. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Therese.
Thank you.
We get to collect the money another year.
Yes. Thank you very much.
That's crazy, you gotta have an agreement for that.
Therese.
Uh, next, Vicki Urbannick, Madam Auditor, Right Stuff Status Report Discussion, as everybody knows, Right Stuff is our, uh, pay, uh, time billing, uh, time clock, uh, that we introduced into the county, uh, several months ago, um, and this is a follow-up report, and we've asked, uh, Vicki Urbannick, the county's auditor, to give us, uh, an update.
Okay.
So, the floor is yours.
Okay, well, thank you very much. This is going to be a six-month status update on our new timekeeping policy, and before I really get into it, I have prepared the report that we just passed out, that goes into a little bit more detail of what I'm gonna say, I'm gonna try to keep my comments, um, as brief as possible. As you know, you authorize the timekeeping system as part of our request to explore upgrades in our financial and payroll system. We've been making various, um, improvements to our payroll system, including the, um, all-important comp time report that you have been reviewing, and I do appreciate you taking it seriously and looking at the, um, financial liability to the county, because we have been tracking that, um, for some time now. Anyway, uh, the Right Stuff system went into effect, um, in late November on a test basis last year. We could not implement timekeeping until after we enhanced our financial system, and after we changed our pay dates from the previous, um, pay current system, which in my mind was unacceptable for us, we needed to change that. And so, finally, we did go forward with the, um, timekeeping system on a test basis in late November. As you remember, you adopted timekeeping rules in February, and then basically all departments that are participating on Right Stuff, the timekeeping system, really went live by the end of March. So, I just wanna briefly address what's been positive about the program and some of the negatives that we've seen as well. I cannot emphasize this enough, that the change has been significant. Employees and supervisors are doing things differently now with respect to timekeeping, and it has totally improved accountability and transparency in payroll to a level that we have never seen before. And I want to emphasize some of the, um, benefits here. First off, the time sheets, the employee service records, are now being kept up-to-date on a real-time basis. In the past, employees had to hand-write their time on these paper cards. They were supposed to turn them in to the auditor's office after the start of the new year. Some did, some didn't, and it's pretty unfortunate that we don't have some of these time sheets over the years. Now, that's going to be a thing of the past, because all time sheets are electronically approved. In the past, supervisors would have to manually type in vacation time, or sick time, or comp time that their employees, um, either earned or took. Some supervisors did, and as you just heard, some didn't. And it has come back to haunt us now. Some would report this every payroll, but then what the employees reported on their time sheets didn't necessarily agree. So, this caused a lot of inefficiencies for us in the auditor's office, because we would try to go back and try to recreate the real, in a sense. That's all been changed now, because leave banks are now electronically tracked and monitored on a day-to-day basis. So, uh, as long as employees want to take a vacation day, or a sick day, or a comp time, they have to submit a form, and their supervisor has to approve it, and now it's electronically part of our system. Another advantage in my mind is that this software is based on county rules, this is a software program, and the programmers at Right Stuff had to create rules, and so whatever is in our county policy, uh, has to be in this timekeeping system. So, if there's any deviations, we have to make the manual adjustment, and we are requiring supporting documentation whenever there's a deviation from the rules. And now, it's in our system where we have a note. In the prior system, payroll supervisors may have had access to change certain things, and it, it wasn't very clear why they were doing it. Um, and one of the other advantages from my standpoint is the schedule. This is a little bit, um, controversial with some departments early on, because they don't operate on a normal, you know, eight-thirty to four-thirty schedule. But as a supervisor, with one quick look, you can see all of your employees in that week, you can go back, you can go forward in time, you can see who's taking off on vacation, who clocked in that day, who forgot to clock in, who, who clocked in and out for lunch, who forgot to clock in and out for lunch. It's a, it's a lot of great information. There's other benefits, but I do wanna address some of the problems that we have seen. When we first went into this, um, upgrade of our financial and payroll system, including timekeeping, I was told by various individuals, other, other auditors and vendors, expect there to be glitches, uh, for a good year. Things should take, things need to take time to work out, um, whenever we're doing a major enhancement like this. Well, I don't wanna wait a year, I wanna make sure that we have things up and running properly, and so we've been very diligent in trying to address some of the negative issues. Uh, one of the areas that we have found has been in the leave banks, this is one of the biggest benefits of the program, but at the initial conversion, some of the leave banks were not updated properly. We did ask all departments and employees to let us know, um, so that we could make adjustments. But part of the problem is that we have different departments with different needs and different, maybe, um, nuances, so we've had to reprogram our, um, system to meet our county policy. And just in the past month, there have been two major updates that I think we have resolved just about all of these lingering issues with the leave banks, um, and so now they should be pretty much up to date. There's been some other issues, um, such as password parameters are complex, some people are being locked out of the system, and so they have to call us, and then we have to work with them on getting... them on getting a temporary password. And we are seeing something that you mentioned that you just addressed now. It does seem like some supervisors have delegated their authority to employees for handling the approval process, and that's not the intent of this. And we have been able to track this because we can see what passwords have been expired. So with your new policy of requiring that comp time be signed off with an actual signature, I think that will help address it. I will say Right Stuff has been very helpful with us. They have been working with us diligently. These last two updates were really major. And I think they want to see this work as best as possible. And I think we are definitely heading in the right direction. And that concludes my report, and I can go on and give you more details, but I just want to say, I think overall, it has been, we've had some growing things, but overall it's totally enhanced accountability and transparency. And I do want, once again, to thank you for allowing us to go forward with our financial upgrades, our payroll upgrades, and of course, for giving us the task of implementing timekeeping.
Thank you, Vicky. Your department did a yeoman's job there, a lot of heavy lifting. So thank you to you and your staff.
Thank you very much.
Mm-hmm. Next on the agenda, we got Rich Sexton from the Highway Department. This is for additional appropriation, Fund 1169 account, 3950 contractual, amount of $39,810. This is for reimbursement for, from state for striping roads. Morning, Rich. Want to give us the capsule of what that's all about real quick?
Earlier this year, we got a grant from the state to upgrade all the, a lot of railroad crossings with the new thermoplastic. So that's, that's where this money is coming back from the state. Went out and inspected every site and now they're reimbursing us for our money that we paid out 100%. So.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion in second for a request for additional appropriation. This is a reimbursement from state for striping roads. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, both same sign. Motion carries. Thanks, Rich.
All right. Another thing, this is a couple of about 25 miles more of striping this year. We've already have a list made up of 10 miles. So it'll be about 50 miles of striping this year. And we've put the rumble strips back at Smoke and Division that were there from the, when the project originally started. So now there's three sets at every intersection.
Okay, that's great news. Good to hear we're getting more striping done. That's good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rich. Next, we have Wildlife Management Board, Bob Gregg. I don't think he's here, is he? I don't see him, yeah. We have a couple of things here. Again, all of this that we're getting ready to approve comes out of a fund that is for there for wildlife. So this is not, this is money that has been budgeted for, but we're just going to execute. First, we have, I always get a kick out of this, Incredible Bats, Inc., an agreement to provide a one-hour educational presentation for Celebrate Wildlife Festival on Saturday, October 6th in the amount of $525. We can do them all? Good. Potawatomi Zoo, an agreement to provide animals for the Celebrate Wildlife Festival in the amount of $220. Shelly Safari Shows, an agreement to provide live animal shows at the Celebrate Wildlife Festival in the amount of $750. Indiana Wild, an agreement to provide live animal shows at Celebration Wildlife Festival in the amount of $350. Sounds like we're going to have a lot of animals there. Request to reimburse payment for repair of the fence and a new bridge at the Zona Wildlife Sanctuary in the amount of $3,416.32. This is for materials only. The labor was done by volunteers. And then we have Mark's Art, an agreement to provide a live animal show at Celebrate Wildlife Festival in the amount of $750, and that is it.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion in second for the six items under Wildlife Management Board as previously noted for the agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, both same sign. Motion carries.
Sounds like a big event.
Big event. Lot of, lot of animals. I don't know what kind of animals, but we're going to have animals.
They're wild ones.
All right, so for some of you that have been in the room that have been patiently waiting for the next up here, we have our own Scott McDonald of Stage
The one and only.
and prominence of the Memorial Opera House and Desma Bellesus from Schmidt Associates in Indianapolis.
Okay. Just to give everybody a brief recap, and then I'll turn it over to Scott. This was something that the Memorial Opera House and the foundation went out together, found a grant, and it was a 50-50 grant.
Correct.
We came up with the money, with the match, and we were able to engage a design, a designer is to giving us some forward-looking recommendations on what we want to do with our little gem that we have here in Porter County, the Memorial Opera House. And out of that came this presentation and this study, and we're very excited about it. But with that, we'll turn it over to Scott and he can fill in the details.
Well, thank you very, very much. Good morning. And yeah, we are very, very pleased with the results of this study that Schmidt has provided for us. It's been, since January of this year, we went out and we sought vendors and went through the entire vetting process. Schmidt certainly led the pack, and Desma has been a wonderful point of contact for me in creating this. And their architects have come up with some very exciting things. I think it does give us a very solid footprint and an idea of what needs to be done for the restoration and preservation of the building and potential expansion, I think, in the future too. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Desma.
Awesome. Thank you. Very excited to be here and talk to you all a little bit about what we've been doing for the past almost a year now. You explained a little bit about the process, and what we want to talk about is kind of what process we follow, just to, again, make sure that everybody's on the same page. What we found while actually examining the historic structures. You did say it is a gem. It's a great, great building that you have here. And how do we protect that? What are those priority items to make sure that you are protecting this investment long-term? And then what are those future assets? So the process that we went through, we did have an opportunity to meet with several of you, actually, and talk about what is important about this building. Why is it so, so important to this community? We also brought an entire team of architects, engineer, interior designer, site civil planners, all of those folks out to really assess the building. And this is a process that we've done on, I think, now our total is over 1,500 buildings across the state, to make sure that you have a good knowledge of what you are working with. Because we don't want to miss anything, we don't want to spend the county's money creating an addition or doing something when we're not taking care of some of the major issues that might already be in existence. We've put together a phasing plan, the estimate, had discussions with Scott to the team, kind of what we've come up with, put together that final report, and now we have that actionable plan. So as you guys are ready to move forward, you have those steps outlined for you. So at the beginning of any project that we work on, we find it very, very important to talk about what the goals are and objectives are. If we don't all have a common understanding, it's very easy to end up in a different place. So with this project, it really was to understand those current conditions, to maintain that historic character. This building is part of the National Register of Historic Places, so it is important not just to you, but to the country. And then also to create a conceptual plan on how do we address those current and future needs. So we're going to share with you some of those things that we found. So in doing the building assessment, you can see there are some photos up here of things that are going very well. The team has done an amazing job of keeping on top of as many maintenance and issues that they can. There are also some larger items that we're going to address that we put as our priority one. Again, maintaining that infrastructure of the overall building, its structural integrity and its ability to keep water and moisture out is very key to protecting the longevity of this facility. And so we're going to talk about some of those here. So you can see, and I know commissioners, you have received a report of the building assessment, where we have studied every, every aspect of the building. Go ahead and hit that. One of the big things that we like to look at is what we call a Facility Suitability Score. And I know it's easy to look at that and say, 52%, that seems really, really low. That is not low. When we talk about looking at and assessing a facility, 100% is brand-new. That's the day that building opens. And as we all know, any sort of facility we have depreciates in value over time. And for the age of this building at 125 years, 52 is actually really, really great. 30% is when we start looking at, mm, is this worth salvaging? But 50% definitely says there's a lot of life left in this building. The most important thing that anyone always asks about is it structurally sound? It is structurally sound. So beyond that, we have to make sure that we keep it that way and keep all the water, keep everything out that we want to keep out, keep everything in that we want to keep in. So we're going to talk a little bit about those recommendations and those high priority items, those things that we feel like need to be addressed as soon as possible to make sure that the building lasts. So on those priority lists, we do have exterior walls, exterior windows, exterior doors. That building envelope is very important. The roof has been well-maintained, actually with a recent roof replacement. I know that's been a big effort in the past to make sure that we are keeping water out. So you do not see that on here, which is a normal, a normal piece that we often find. Steps and access is also an issue that we want to discuss. Exterior lighting, and then of course, mechanical systems. For those of you who have enjoyed a show in the theater, in particular in the heat of summer, I'm sure you will appreciate some updated systems.
Mm-hmm.
So let's talk a little bit about the exterior walls. So anyone who has walked around the Memorial Opera House has probably seen some of this deterioration that has been going on on the exterior of the building. Years ago, it was determined as probably a very cost-effective solution to coat the exterior masonry with a cementitious parging coating. And what that does is kind of two things. One good thing, it does help as a kind of a Band-Aid to keep water out. Problem is, it is not a really good effective solution for long-term. It also can do a lot of damage to the underlying masonry, which is what you are seeing here. So even if we are trying to keep water out from infiltrating in the walls, water can still come in through the top, it needs to find a way out, which is why you're seeing a lot of this deterioration towards the base, is that water builds up and that parging is actually starting to fall off and in some cases, taking the face of that brick with it. So this is the, the backside of the building as well. This is happening all around. You can see here in the detail of the blown-up picture, as some of that parging and painting coatings are coming off, you can see all the holes in the mortar. So those are one of the big concerns that we have. When we have holes in mortar, we have great opportunities for water to get into the facility, which we do not want. The front facade on the north is actually the best condition. It looks like this facade has been well-cared-for. It likely had a higher-quality brick put on it in the beginning, which is why it's held up so well. But we do still have some of that mortar deterioration you can see again along the base of those buildings that we want to take, take care of and fix those turrets so we can keep all of, all of the water out. So I know that for you guys, a lot of this comes down to dollars and cents. So on those east, south, and west walls, what we have looked at doing is pointing, which is basically removing the mortar from in-between the joints and replacing that with new mortar that will help keep moisture out, and then doing a sealing coat over that, over that work. And to do those three walls, it's about $165,000. We also do want to make sure that we are still taking care of that north facade as well. It's the front face of the building. And so that one, we do want to look at doing a water repellent coat over the whole surface. It would be clear, perfectly able to see through, and repointing where needed. That is listed as a priority two item because it's not nearly as in bad condition as the other faces of the building. The other aspect that we want to take a look at is your exterior stairs. So you can see there are several areas, especially along the east face of this building, where those stoops have deteriorated. As these are serving as emergency egress from the theater, we want to make sure that that is being well-cared-for and that people do not have a trip hazard if they were to be evacuating the building in that case of an emergency. So we do want to make sure that we are addressing these items. And the stair that actually goes down to the basement, you can see the deteriorating brick around that area as well. Want to make sure that all of that gets cleaned up to keep all of our, our water and issues out. And looking at replacing the stoops, adding new handrails, fixing this lower basement stair, that's about $50,000 to fix those items. Windows and doors. So for the most part, your windows are in good condition. The sills and the sashes do need to be scraped, they need to be sealed, they need to be repainted. Unfortunately, with these historic windows, that wood is, is very sturdy, but we need to make sure we're keeping that moisture out so it does not continue to deteriorate. So looking at, kind of doing this around the entire building, addressing all of the door frames, all of the window sills, looking at some of the windows actually do need to be reglazed. And when you look at glazing or talk about glazing in an historic context, it's a little bit different. So glazing in today's architectural world means glass. Glazing when you're talking about historic windows is actually the putty that holds the windows in. So what we would want to do where those are leaking is actually have those glass panes removed and replaced and resealed. So we've estimated that at about $57,500. And then exterior lighting. So I know parking is, is a high issue around this area, but we also want to make sure that if people are parking in the lot to the east, as they might have to exit out of this building, that there is some safety and security lighting installed. So we did look at adding this as kind of an extra feature to make sure that people do feel safe coming to and from the Memorial Opera House. And the last item on our list is the mechanical system. So as you are probably well-aware, the cooling system is actually not functioning to its full capacity anymore. It is nearing its end of life, which makes repair of that system really not a good use of your dollars. So we would look at replacing the main condensing unit that serves the auditorium space, also making sure that the ducts that run through the attic space to serve that area get insulated as well, since the attic is not insulated, so you're not losing any of that cooling. We also want to make sure that we replace the controls system. So the control system is very, very outdated. I believe that's on this lovely next slide, as, as are your boilers. So you can see even just by looking at that equipment, those are, are starting to show their age and they are not functioning properly for your needs. So we do want to look at overhauling that mechanical system. It makes sense to do it all at once, so everything does work together to make sure that that, that your building is well-conditioned. So looking at all of the items on the mechanical system upgrades, this is one of the larger costs. Mechanical systems are things that nobody sees, but everybody feels. So looking at replacing the condensing unit, upgrading the HVAC within the auditorium, replacing boilers, updating temperature controls. There was actually a recent replacement of a cooling system for the green room, which is great, but no heating was included. So looking at adding a heating coil to make sure that that can serve both cooling and heating needs. And then upgrading the radiant piping that surrounds all the windows, again, to keep all of that mechanical system working well. So that ends up being right around $800,000 as a ballpark estimate. So in the list that you have been provided, looking at all of the items that we came up with as priority one, two, and three, it is, it ends up being about a one and a half million dollar endeavor to get the building back up to where you would want it to be, which is not going to put you at that 100%. It's never going to be like new again, but it will still help make sure that the building is maintained for the next 50 years. And then we also wanted to take a look at what future options might we have after going and seeing some, some opportunities and people actually using the building and trying to get in and out of the restrooms, in and out of the main theater space. It's obvious that there's just not quite enough space there to do what you want to do. So we looked at where could there be an opportunity for expansion? You're pretty landlocked in pretty much every area except for the west. So we looked at an opportunity to basically connect both the museum and the opera house with a new space that could add additional restrooms and a larger gathering space while opening up some of the existing area in the theater space itself to add for a control room, to get some seats back, as well as, again, make some larger restrooms. I know anyone who's waited in line during intermission would like a couple more. So looking at adding, adding an expansion to the building and really bridging those two together, which is going to take some, some finesse. We have some different heights going on with the different buildings. We have a lot of historic features and windows that we want to make sure we maintain because we don't want to lose any of the character that you have on either of these facilities. But still add some exciting elements that can make this more usable for more functions.
I have a question for you.
Yes.
Obviously, in the plan, it, you know, we're, we're trying to get some public restrooms out there on the front that are ADA, but they will also help the library, the museum, Poco Museum will help them to, would also give them ADA bathrooms as well for their space. My question is, I've been, you know, being in construction and going around and walking around the building, are the, the elevations on the library or the museum, I call it library, the museum, it, it looks a little problematic. Is that going to be a problem here to get, because that, that entry into the building is two to three feet up in the air, and I'm hoping that we don't end up with the ramp to nowhere, you know?
Sure. I will admit, we have not looked at tying, excessively tying the museum in with this blended project or with this kind of combined space. That is something we can study, but we haven't looked at the other building enough to, to understand it the way that we understand the opera house. So it is currently set up for that elevator to operate and to work with the opera house and not with the museum next door. Now, we can look at how that might tie in, but as you very well put, all the elevations are at different heights. So are there opportunities that could make that work? There are. It just gets a little bit more complicated and it might be worth studying the museum as a separate piece and how might we get access to that facility in a different way? I don't know if within the space that we have between these two facilities, if we can connect those, really it'll be four different elevations, actually five different elevations.
I'm not really, not really, I don't really see the elevator being a component to the museum. I really don't. What I see it as being is the public ADA restrooms, which I think is very important for the museum. And the elevator, to me, is a component for the opera house. That gets vertical lift to the balcony and to our breakout rooms up there and things like that. So with that question, I mean, how much more do you think you'd have to study it to? Because I think that that's, to me, that's a very, very integral part of helping both proper. I'm very, I see that the museums or the opera house is going to get their fix, but I'm thinking if we're going to go to, if we were to go to the expense of encapsulating the two buildings and connecting them, I think, again, I can't overemphasize the importance of the ADA bathrooms for the museum. So that's where I'm at. I don't know what we got to do to figure that out, but just going out and looking at it and eyeballing it, I just went and just, that's where I'm going on the next thing.
There is an existing stair that comes off of the east face of the museum that would be kind of incorporated in this addition, that if we removed that stair, we could put in more of a simple ADA lift, so not a, yep, so not a full elevator.
Twenty-inch lift up, okay.
So that way you could, someone in a wheelchair could easily go from that floor to where the accessible restrooms would be in kind of this conjoined building. So that could be an opportunity. We would have to look at, is there still ambulatory access from the two and how could those two pieces kind of be combined in the area that we have? So that is something that I think could be looked at and we could probably find a solution to.
Okay. That was my only question. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt your lines.
Yeah, you're fine. You can see, yes, that's the second, oh, got these backwards, first floor, second floor, it's almost the same thing. But yes, part of the expansion would include additional restrooms. On the second floor here, there is the mechanical space. Can you fast forward one more and let me see if I, yeah, see, just, so what happens when you're doing things in a hurry? So you can see the stair just south of the men's restroom is a very wide stair. I believe it's almost eight feet. So there is a strong chance that we could try to fit both things within kind of that footprint and envelope there.
And there on the plan, you can see where the restrooms are that would be in-between the two buildings and that's what I was referring to, just to give the folks in the audience a reference.
And this is very conceptual, so there's still lots of time to look at making sure that that would happen.
Okay. All right. Fantastic.
Other questions?
So the new addition is about one and a half spitballing. So between the two, we're looking at three, 3.5 to get her phase one, phase two, and then the looking ahead.
Correct. And when we look at these numbers, we like to make sure that we're including total project costs, not just construction. So I believe you do see that in the budgetary documents as well. That's why we've got the two line items. Nobody wants to come back and ask for more money.
Nope. Yeah, nope. Well, thank you for the presentation today. And the reason that we decided to put this on our agenda was what we wanted to do today as a board was to accept this feasibility study and make it a point of record. The only thing that I would ask is on the feasibility study that you have, if you could maybe change the date on it until today? Because then that gives us a record of when it was approved by the county and then the clock starts ticking on all of us at that point. But I just wanted to make sure that it was all set up and ready to go in that.
And I have to point out too, we've got several members of the foundation here who have been really helpful with all of this and will be going forward.
Yeah, can we have the people from the foundation step up here? Because I know you have some folks here. You know, the foundation was very instrumental in stepping up and helping the money for this matching grant that we got. So we have a very active foundation and very engaged foundation, which is the lifeblood of that building. And so we just want to thank you all for taking your personal time in your daily lives today, sitting through a whole commissioners' meeting. But thank you for everything you do and we're going to try like heck here to get caught up here and get caught up with you all and start moving in the right direction. So thank you for your efforts. Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the board? All right. We're off and rolling.
Thank you very much.
We need to make, we need to accept.
Motion to accept the feasibility study.
We have a motion and a second to accept the feasibility study for the rehabilitation of the Memorial Opera House by Schmidt and Associates. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, post, same sign, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very, very much.
Good job, Scott.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Now we got Bob Thompson.
Talk quickly.
Yeah, Jim's getting hungry. Yeah. He missed his 11:30 lunch date, so we got to get him fed.
I sat down here with five candies and told myself, I wasn't going to touch any of them. There's only one left.
Two now. Okay, we got USI Consultants. This is an agreement for Bridge 168. If you've come to our meetings before, you know our march towards getting our bridge inventory back up to speed again here in the county. We got a lot of work to do there as well. Bob, give us a brief overview.
Yes, Bridge 168 is Brummitt Road over the Little Caymanet River, just right next to Brummitt Elementary School, just south of Indian Boundary Road. It had a low sufficiency rating. We do have federal monies for construction in this and it's scheduled for replacement in January of 2022. USI is also working on Bridge 126. They are here, Brendan Arnold, the project engineer, and also Ben Beer with the, USI, if you have any questions for them.
So the maximum payout on this is $330,964?
Yes, for the engineering. There is still going to be some right-of-way or potential utilities that we're going to have to work with on that.
But that'd be a separate issue. Yep. I've reviewed the contract, it's in good form.
And where would that bridge have to be, the work be done, because it's on a tributary?
This one's going to have a lot of environmental items with it, especially since Army Corps of Engineers has a grant and to the parcel to the east with Shirley Hines. Is the construction money is set and indot has this for a January of 2022 letting for this particular bridge.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Yeah, motion and second to approve the contract for the engineering for Bridge 168, Brummitt Road to USI Consultants. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, post, same sign, motion carries. I was just asking for the audience, there's certain creeks and tributaries that are regulated by the federal government for salmon or whatever. And we have a certain amount of time that we can work in that waterway and then it's hands-off. So the timing on these things are a little difficult sometimes. I just wanted to point that out to everybody. Probably too much information, but. And we have a performance letter of credit for Timberland Farms. This is phase three. What's this about?
Timberland Farms Phase Three is going to be recording their plat. They still have a few items that need to be completed as far as infrastructure on that and this is the performance guarantee that guarantees our completion.
And Attorney McClure, you've looked this over?
I have.
How's it looking?
It's good.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second to approve a performance letter of credit for the Timberland Farms subdivision Phase Three. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, post, same sign, motion carries. Next, oh boy, we got a, we have a planned unit development amendment. This is the Prairie at Aberdeen. This is first reading, so we got to enter into our public hearing thing, protocol. Any comments, Scott, you want, or Bob, why don't you give us the lowdown here?
Okay. Petitioner here is the Prairie at Aberdeen. This is Plan Commission Resolution Number 18-06. This was heard before the Plan Commission at their August public hearing, August 22nd. This is a very simple one. They are just changing the name of the PUD from the Prairie at Aberdeen to the Prairie. This is a public hearing. Mr. Ferngin, who represented, Attorney Ferngin, who represented the Prairie before the Plan Commission was unable to attend today, so I told him I would handle this. It's, they're removing it so that way there's no association with Aberdeen.
Motion to approve.
Well, we got to do, we got to do a public hearing. So what we're going to do here is we're going to suspend the commissioners' meeting here. We're going to open up a public hearing. We're going to give opportunities for people to come up and speak for and against. We're going to call out three times. So first call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak against this ordinance? Second call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak against this, well, it's not really an ordinance, amendment? Third and final, anybody wishing to come forward to speak against this amendment? Now we're going to give anybody the opportunity to come forward, first call, to speak in favor of this amendment. Second call, anybody wishing to come forward and speak in favor of this amendment? Third and final time, anybody wishing to come forward to speak in favor of this amendment? And with that, the public hearing is now closed. We'll open it up to the floor for the commissioners to take action. This is first reading. We'll have a second reading if approved at our next commissioners' meeting.
Can we go ahead and do both right now?
Yeah.
Because there's no money.
Yes, so moved.
Suspend the rules and we don't have to do it again.
On this amendment for the PUD, yes.
So we got to make a motion to suspend the?
First, we have to approve it on first.
No, you have to do the motion to suspend the rules by unanimous, then do a motion to approve.
Motion to suspend the rules.
Second, we have a motion and a second to suspend the rules. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, post, same sign, motion carries. So now we're going to do first and second reading?
We're done.
We're done. Nice.
We have to approve the change, right?
Yep.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the planned unit development amendment for the Prairie at Aberdeen. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, post, same sign, motion carries. Okay, now we got, go ahead, Bob. Next on the list, we got a request to vacate the unimproved right-of-way in Han-Rahan subdivision. Petitioner Thomas Rice, first reading.
Yes, this is petition of Thomas Rice to approve the right-of-way for an unimproved road called Hemlock Drive. This is at the very north end of what is West Long Lake Road or 70 East, I believe the county road is, very north end. The petitioner is requesting the right-of-way to be vacated, so that way they can make it into one parcel, tear down the old houses there and build a new house in this location. Staff has done a look into as far as utilities go there and there are no utilities running through the right-of-way other than those that may be servicing the existing house that is in this location. Again, this is ordinance first reading.
Staff's recommendation is to approve?
Staff recommendation is to approve.
Yep. We're going to close the public, the commissioners' meeting, open up a public hearing, same format again. We're going to give everybody three chances to speak in favor and three chances to speak against. First call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak against this request to vacate? Second call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak against this request to vacate? Third and final time, anybody wishing to come forward to speak against this request to vacate? Anybody wishing to come forward to speak, first call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak in favor of this vacation? Not a vacation, vacate. Second call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak in favor of this vacating? Third and final time, anybody wishing to come forward?
Jeff needs some lunch.
Yeah, I know, yeah. Third and final time, anybody wishing to come forward to speak in favor of this vacate of unimproved right-of-way? And with that, the public hearing is now closed. We'll open it up to the board.
Motion to approve.
Second, we have a motion and a second, first reading, to request to vacate the unimproved right-of-way in Han-Rahan subdivision. The petitioner is Thomas Rice. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, post, same sign, motion carries. Second reading will be at our next commissioners' meeting. Next, Bob?
Next is Plan Commission Resolution 18-05. The petitioner is Tudor Design Center LLC. They're requesting a zoning map amendment from I-1 Light Industrial District to CH, High Intensity Commercial District. This is in the northeast corner of 400 East and US 3. Some of you may have known that this was a building supply center previously with roofing materials and stuff. Tudor Design is proposing to move their flooring division over there on this and Plan Commission at their August 22nd meeting gave a favorable recommendation by a 6-0 vote to this.
So it looks like Tudor's growing. That's ahead yet, yes? That's good news. Well, once again, we're going to do the public hearing thing. So we're going to pause the commissioners' meeting, open up a public hearing, same protocols before. We're going to give, call out first time, first call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak against this rezone? Second call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak against this rezone? Third and final time, anybody wishing to come forward to speak against this rezone? First opportunity for anybody to speak in favor of this rezone? Second call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak in favor of this rezone? Third and final time, anybody wishing to come forward to speak in favor of this rezone? And with that, the public hearing is closed. Open it back up to the commissioners' meeting and to the commissioners.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second to rezone 11, I-1 Light Industry to CH, Commercial, High Intensity. Petitioner Tudor Design Center LLC zoning map amendment. This is first reading. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, post, same sign, motion carries. Be back at our next commissioners' meeting and we'll approve the second reading. Thank you. And last one, Bob?
This is Plan Commission Resolution 18-04. Petitioner is FWA Development LLC, Falling Waters Cottage Homes. They're requesting a zoning map amendment from R-1 Low Density Single Family Residential District to PUD Planned Unit Development District. This is a particular number of lots that are within the existing Falling Waters that staff recommended that they go forward with the PUD. They're combining it into large lots, it's going to be maintenance-free type, living with cottage homes in there. One of the things that came out of the Plan Commission with the original ordinance that we had proposed written, they had 1,000 square feet. It is now up to 1,750 square feet for the residential structures. As the minimum. Yes, thank you.
That was the key issue of Plan Commission.
Right. Again, this is a first reading.
Okay, same last time. We're going to pause the meeting here for the commissioners, open up a public hearing. Same as before, we're going to give first call for anybody to come forward to speak against this rezone? Anybody wishing to come forward to speak against this rezone? Third and final time, anybody wishing to come forward to speak against this rezone? First time, anybody wishing to come forward and speak in favor of this rezone? Second call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak in favor of this rezone? Anybody wishing to, third and final time, anybody wishing to come forward, speak in favor of this ordinance? If there's anybody in the audience that is in favor of this, feel free to stand. Here we have a gentleman coming forward. Feel free to give your name and address.
Good afternoon.
Yeah, I know.
776 Serp Drive, Crown Point, Indiana, which is in Falling Waters. Been a resident there for 10 years. As we, as I spoke a couple of weeks ago, to me, I think this is a wonderful opportunity for the people of Falling Waters, for the people of Porter County. As you travel around Northwest Indiana, you see a lot of these cottage homes. It seems like it's something that's really sparked, you know, Valparaiso, Sheroville, Crown Point, and I think it's a wonderful, wonderful idea for us to have it out there. And for the first time in 10 years that I've been And for the first time in 10 years that I've lived in Falling Waters, we really have some excitement in Falling Waters and how it's growing and how can it be a vital part of Porter County. And I would appreciate that we are allowed to move forward to develop or the new developers allowed to move forward to make this happen. So thank you for your time and all that you do for our community. Thank you.
Thank you for the positive comments. So third, any, one last call, anybody wishing to speak in favor? We have another gentleman coming forward. Please state your name and address. Thank you.
63 Moreno Parish, still living out in Falling Waters since 2005. And its developers have done a lot of good things to the community. Things are improving, things are going in the right direction. I think this is another positive thing for our subdivision, right? This is just going to be really important for the subdivision to this.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for sitting through our meeting, too. Come forward, sir. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name is Don Plum. I live at 784 Circuit Drive in Falling Waters, and I was involved in HOA for about 12 years. Recently retired from HOA, but I, the more I've seen of this cottage homes, it's an excellent idea. I did do some research on my own. I went to other subdivisions in Lake and Porter Counties to see how they were working in other subdivisions. And initially, I was kind of on the fence, but after looking into it, seeing that it's really, I think it would be a great idea for Falling Waters. I think it would be a positive step forward to populate our subdivision and attract people from another county and increase our population in Porter County. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments in favor? And with that, the public hearing is now closed. Open it up to the floor. This is first reading.
Motion to approve on first reading.
Second. We have a motion and second to approve the rezone for single-family residential to PUD Planned Unit Development. Petitioner is FWA Development LLC for Falling Waters subdivision. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign, motion carries. We'll be back for second reading at our next commissioners' meeting. And last thing on the agenda is request to use the courthouse grounds on Friday, October 19th, 2018, from 4:00 to 6:00 in the evening for the Fall Harvest Festival from 2:00 to 7:00 for trick-or-treating. If anybody's never been to that before in downtown Doppo, it's quite an event. It really is. It's, it's one of the neatest things I've seen, so I'm all for it. I'll make the motion. Second. We have a motion and second for the approval to use the courthouse grounds on, or what's not fenced off of the courthouse grounds, October 19th, for the Fall Harvest Festival. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign, motion carries. And we are done. And with that, this, anybody wishing to address this board?